And candidates for the state superintendentcy. We're very happy to be joined by Alan Ingram, who's -- we appreciate your willingness to put yourself forward as a candidate from Massachusetts of most recent. We are going to talk with and hear more from Alan in a moment. Alan, let me first introduce you to some of the board members, because you probably the one person who doesn't know most of the people here, hasn't watched -- unless you've been bored watching TV late at night, Michigan government television. Eileen Weiser, immediately on your left, has been on and off the board for, what, a dozen years. Kathleen Strauss is going to join us in a minute. I'll introduce her properly. Lupe Ramos Montagny was elected four years ago. Lupe, from Grand Rapids, Michigan. You always have to say Grand Rapids.
Grand Rapids, Michigan.
Our West Michigan advocate here.
Gotcha.
Sneaking up on your left is Kathleen Strauss, the Board President Emeritus. Kathleen, meet Alan Ingram.
Thank you.
Kathleen has been on the board for 20-some years.
Forty-two.
Former president of the board. And Pamela Smith-Pew, just elected last fall from Saginaw, Michigan. You met Marilyn Schneider. John Austin, we've had a chance to talk. Cassandra Ulbricht is Vice President of the Board of Education, from Macomb County or Oakland County. And Michelle Fecto, from Detroit.
One of the two.
Works in Macomb County, hails from Oakland County. So, listen, very much appreciate your offering your candidacy and obviously tremendous background, and we appreciate, like all our great candidates. Alan, most recently, or is the deputy in Massachusetts in their equivalent of our State Department of Education.
That's correct.
And so, we appreciate your coming to join us, so we can learn more about each other.
Well, again, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. I'm really excited by the chance in Michigan. I won't bore you with a lot of my background. I provided a resume and CV, so you should have all of those details. But I would, before getting to the presentation, just want to summarize, I'll be it briefly, that I've had a wide depth and breadth of experiences, not only at the State Department of Education, at arguably one of the best and top-performing education agencies in the country, but I've spent four years as an urban superintendent. I spent 10 years in Oklahoma City, working as a central office administrator. I've spent a couple of years at higher ed, recruiting students to a private institution, largest private institution in Oklahoma City. And prior to that, I had a career in the Air Force, which I'm very proud of. So, had a chance to serve our nation all over the world. Two years in Europe, three years in Hawaii, and a bunch of places in between. So, just wanted to set the context a little bit. So, I was fortunate enough to get information about two questions that you really wanted answered, so won't belabor the point, but wanted to take some time to get into that, so just will jump right in. I wanted to start with some data pieces, and it may be a little difficult on the screen, but what I'm attempting to show and reflect is what I hope the board shares is a sense of urgency around the need for improvement with Michigan's schools. And so, I say that not as a slight to Superintendent Flanagan, or anyone who has been involved in the past efforts of your system, but looking at the NAEP scores, the nation's report card, NAEP scores for reading, and average scale scores compared to surrounding states, along with Massachusetts, you get a pretty good feel for where Michigan is now. So, you see the fourth grade results, and then the eighth grade results, and that's every school, every school district in the country being represented, and those numbers are every state with a representative sampling. And then you see the 12th grade administered only in 13 states, and so you can see Michigan's relative ranking with the blue-colored line graph. Math is not much better. Again, not an indictment, but I think it just speaks to the need for urgency and the need for a comprehensive reform plan for the next superintendent for Michigan. And again, I think Massachusetts has done well. It's been a leader in the standards movement since the 1993 Ed Reform Law in Massachusetts. And one of the things I think has been a contributor to that effort is the commitment in what is referred to with the '93 reform in Massachusetts is known as the grand bargain, but the commitment was, is that there was going to be not only additional resources, not only choice and some charter opportunities, but also a stronger accountability system to make sure that all children were experiencing an opportunity for good quality education across the Commonwealth. And so, regardless of governor, whether Republican or Democrat, the legislature, regardless of the changes in the leadership there, the commitment has remained firm for the last 20-plus years, and I think that's really been a testament to many of the results that the Commonwealth is enjoying today. And so, I'll talk a little bit more about that, but before I get there, I also wanted to share with you your cohort dropout rate, which is taking a look at ninth graders who entered ninth grade in Michigan and who, for whatever reason, four years later, with their graduating classes, that do not make it. And you can see, looking at the first year, 2008, where you were at 14.2 percent compared to Massachusetts at 9 percent, and you can see where you are now for 2013. I could not find your 2014 numbers, but somewhat stagnant. And so, again, one of the things we've done well in Massachusetts is develop a comprehensive graduation plan targeted in the districts with the greatest need. So, to your two questions, strategies to improve state performance across the system. First and foremost, I think it's going to require a clear vision and a commitment to that vision, shared vision around high expectations and quality instruction. And to be specific about that, what I'm essentially trying to get at is that too often, particularly in urban centers or in communities where student performance is not what it needs to be, there is a rationalization around their conditions in life. And so, we see that in Massachusetts. I've seen it in Oklahoma. I lived part of it as a son of Michigan, growing up in Detroit, where the expectations for children who come from poverty, high-poverty backgrounds, or other challenging conditions are lowered. And what we know is that all children can do well with the right supports and the right expectations. So, that's what I hope to bring to the board, is a way to serve as a linchpin, if you will, and co-develop, co-construct what that vision should be, but to make sure that we hold a high bar for all kids. Making sure that there's clarity around the roles of the superintendent and the board. I think that's just good board practice, and the Center for Public Education has touted that as one of the linchpins that's necessary for a high-functioning board at the state level. Third, I think is absolutely critical, that there is a coherent and comprehensive education reform strategy, and that the strategy is developed, not in isolation by the state chief or the state chief and the admin staff, but with critical partners, critical friends. And so, how do you help the executive branch of the state government? How do you help the legislators, whether it's the education co-chairs, or how do you help the board? But where we can all come together and make sure that the priorities for the state are clear, consistent, and that there's consensus on what that needs to be. And first and foremost is we got to get really tight, in my estimation, around curriculum, instruction, and assessment, and having high standards for all kids. And the Michigan standards, I'm told, and under the impression of undergone some revisions, I understand that you've made some changes in your assessment system just recently that were expectations created by the legislature, and so, but just to make sure that there's some synergy and consistency around that. I don't think we can just talk about getting better as a state, as we've seen in Massachusetts, around just the efforts in the classroom. You got to look at the pipeline or the continuum. In other words, how do we prepare educators? How do we recruit them? How do we induct them? How do we develop them over the course of their careers and making sure that they have the wherewithal and the tools to do the hard work of public education in the K-12 sector? So, working with higher ed to develop some common definitions about what college career readiness should look like is really important, and something we've done in Massachusetts, consensus on what that definition is, both boards coming together to define that. Obviously, can't ignore, and Michigan has far more schools, twice the number of districts, and you have about 1.5 million schools. We have, I'm sorry, you have about 3,500 schools. We have about 1,800 in Massachusetts. But making sure that there is an effort to turn around the lowest-performing schools across the state, and differentiating that support and what it looks like, because all things are not equal. And so, making sure that there's just some attention to that. Finally, using data to integrate technology and support student achievement. I think that's one of the board priorities that I read about, and so I would look to make sure that there's some ways that that's integrated into this comprehensive coherent plan. And finally, not just worried about the academics of children, but also their social-emotional supports and ways that can support their efforts. Help them believe in themselves, help them feel good about themselves, but also help them with the emotional supports that all children need as part of their growth and development. Advocating for investments in public education, but with a strong emphasis for accountability. And as I mentioned earlier, differentiating the policy supports. In other words, what's created in the legislature, what's created by the board and regulation, the superintendent and the staff are expected to go forth and implement with fidelity. But making sure that there is some differentiation for high-poverty schools and districts across the state appropriately. And then finally, in terms of what the state can do, is to take a look at team development and training opportunities to build a shared knowledge of values, commitment, and improvement efforts. And so, my hope is that we would spend time together in some boards. Some states do that in the form of retreats. Some do it in terms of professional development, but I would ask that we look for opportunities to work together, so that we could grow, strengthen our ability as a team to better meet the needs of the constituents of Michigan. And then finally, just to, the second part of the question was around strategies to ensure the board and the superintendent are effective. So, you'll see some, what you might look like redundancy, but are things that I think are equally important, whether we're talking about from the state perspective, from the superintendent's perspective, but this notion of commitment to vision and high expectations for all children and equality instruction. I am, if you just go back, look at my career, I've spent quite a bit of time working in teams. I believe in their value, but at the core for me, what I want you to know is that teamwork, trust, transparency, and mutual respect are absolutely important to high-functioning teams. And so, again, what my commitment to you is, is that what I bring to the table is, I'm never going to disagree publicly. I'm never going to violate our trust, if I am so fortunate to be your superintendent, and we can agree to disagree, and I will always respect that. But at the end of the day, I want to make sure that we have consensus on teamwork, trust, transparency, mutual respect, and kids and their learning is a priority of our efforts. And along with that is accountability is important, and I've often said that accountability is the best form of assistance. So, we often talk about what can we do to help districts, but I think we need to make sure that we're protecting the investment of the public and public trust and building goodwill by making sure that we hold everyone accountable, from the superintendent, from the board, from the administrators, and also at the building level. Again, embracing data, making sure that that's a fundamental part of how we make decisions and processes, that we go about our work, and then being intentional about monitoring, and so not waiting to the end of something to determine whether or not it's going to work or not work, or that it has shortcomings. And finally, on the first part of the strategies about the superintendent and the board as being effective, is to make sure that we have alignment with the policy supports, so that we can best achieve the goals and aims of the board. And then the last three things I would just mention, again, is, and some, you know, I don't want to misrepresent about this transition team, so what I'm looking for, what I think would be important, is how do we take stock for your new superintendent? And if I were that superintendent, I'd want to take stock, where are we right now? Where are we in terms of performance as an agency internally? I'd want to involve. I want to be inclusive. I'd want to bring people from across the state, so higher ed partners, your, you know, representatives from the legislature, or the governor's education advisor, but how do we get the right people at the table to take stock, to have some input to the board on the direction that we need to go? My hope is that by doing that, by involving people in the process before decisions are made, that they're more likely to see themselves in these decisions and to support them. And then finally, I want to make sure you know that I would lead from strength, and that I would make sure that we were collaborative, that we were engaged, and that we were responsive to the needs of the board, the public, and that we were transparent and also inclusive as we went about our work. And finally, again, team development, somewhat duplicative, but I think is important for going forward, if we hope to be effective in the long run for the interests of Michigan's children.
Thank you, Alan, and thank you for that introduction. Welcome back to Michigan.
Thank you.
We have 20 questions, the same questions that we're asking all our candidates. If some of them you've already spoken to, we'll be happy to help note that.
Yeah.
And also, at the end, plenty of time to elaborate and to reinforce things you want to make sure we know about you and your agenda, or your abilities and experience, and opportunity to ask us some questions as well, so appreciate that. Cassandra, I think, has the first question.
Can you describe and offer some examples of your experience in successfully improving education and learning outcomes for students?
Thank you for your question. And so, my experience in improving learning outcomes for students. So, I would think of a couple of specific examples. One would be my tenure as superintendent in Springfield, where in 2008, I went in, and Springfield, a large, high-poverty community, very low expectations for children in general, but our graduation rate was hovering around 50 percent. Proficiency rates for high-school students, grade 10 in particular, were woeful. The dropout rate was equally painful, and so, what we tried to do going in, many of the things that I described for you earlier about being inclusive, in terms of bringing people to the table to help make decisions together. And so, built a strong leadership team there, included labor as part of the leadership team, and I'm always reminded that when I brought our labor leader to the leadership team, there were members of my team who thought I had lost my mind, in that, you know, they're going to know everything that we know. And my point to the team was, is that we have mutual interests, we have vested interests, and if it's about the children, we need to be transparent. I didn't bring them to the team to negotiate about the contract, but I did bring them to the table to work on the strategies, the tactics, and the things that affected his membership, affected our kids, so that we could do that jointly. But also, strategic planning was a big part of our success in Springfield. And to be clear, not that we cornered the market. We did, I did not get everything done in Springfield that I wanted to get done, but it was much better, measurably better, when I left, and I'll give you some statistics to go with that. But we had a comprehensive strategic planning process. There were approximately 70 people from across the community, our first effort at this, my first year, and we brought in an outside facilitator to assist us in developing a strategic plan that the community, the business community, the district, and the board could see themselves in. We had input using an affinity process from over 5,000 people, so that we could capture, categorize, and make sure that those voices were heard and captured in the plan. At the end of the day, I can tell you that grade 10 proficiency rates went up by, I think, about 20, 23 percent. The dropout rate is now down at 7 percent. It was double-digit when I got there. It was double-digit when I left, but many of the things that we attempted to do, the district continued to do. Now, they don't have the same strategic plan, but they have made minor modifications, but in, to that effort, some revisions, but the core of the reform strategy is still in place. We appointed, the board appointed, our deputy superintendent, who I appointed as deputy superintendent, so that there was some sustainability, some succession planning, I thought, that went into that. The graduation rate now is at an all-time high. We made incremental improvements originally, but now it's, I think, for the first time, just hit the 60 percent mark. So, they're trending in the right direction. They're not out of the woods by any stretch of the imagination. And then, the second example I would just want to mention is attendance, in terms of the work in Springfield. So, when I arrived, district-wide, the attendance rate was about 88 percent, maybe 87 percent. When I left, it was, for students, it was about 93 percent, hovering close to 94. Teacher attendance, same way. It was woeful, but we began to put in process structures, so that those things could be attended, monitored closely, and then we could make course corrections where we needed to do that. So, strategic planning is a big part of that. Having a sound accountability system to measure and monitor is also important. And finally, in Springfield, was around parent engagement. So, we engage parents much differently. We tried to meet them where they were. We tried to build capacity and their ability to be good parents, and also to help their children. My work at the State Education Agency, we, my work with superintendents, in particular, urban superintendents across the Commonwealth, our language acquisition program, or rethinking equity and teaching for English-language learners, we're seeing improvements in that area on the state at the aggregate level. And so, those are a few things that I think speak to that.
Thank you very much. Michelle.
How has your past experience otherwise prepared you for this position?
Thank you for your question, Michelle. So, as I alluded to earlier, I think my experience is unique, you know, so I'm not a traditional educator. I did not grow up as a classroom teacher in the traditional sense, building administrator, central office administrator, superintendent, you know, maybe bossed him onto the state agency. But my 22 years in the Air Force, 14 of those years were in education and training. And I believe that the Air Force as an organization is one of the best teaching and learning outfits in the world, maybe arguably in the minds of some. But I've had a chance to attend some of the best Air Force schools, to understand instruction, to understand how to teach pedagogy, to understand content, and my content as a classroom facilitator and as an instructional leader was leadership and management. So, it helped me hone my skills in terms of how do we help people to accomplish goals, mission, vision, and priorities of the organization. I think that served me well. I also spent, as part of my preparation, along the way, 10 years in Oklahoma City, lots of work with federal programs, seven superintendents in those 10 years. And I had one-year contracts every year of that 10 years, but my job was never in jeopardy. I served them all well, and I think, again, that speaks volumes in and of itself. My experience in Springfield, I would also mention to you that in preparation to Springfield, I was selected for the Broad Superintendents Academy. Eli and Edith Broad, Mr. Broad, great philanthropists, Michigander himself, and, but the Broad program helped prepare me. It did not change my thinking about how I would go. It helped give me more skills, more things to think about. In that 10-month fellowship as a superintendent academy, we had a chance to go into about a dozen districts across the country to learn from some of the best minds in education, to understand theories of action, the importance of core instruction, what good instruction looks like, how to monitor for success, accountability. It wasn't about taking over districts and disrupting, and so, I didn't implode Springfield upon completing the Broad Academy. I went in, I tried to work with the people that were there. I didn't bring a bunch of people with me. Largely, did some reassignments. There were some people that left of their own accord, as a result of the pace and the vision that we had set, and it didn't fit with what they wanted, and so they left of their own accord. There were a couple of terminations, but it was due to performance. The only point I'm trying to make is that some, I think publicly, have, you know, perhaps characterized the Broad Foundation and the work that they do to prepare superintendents as somewhat to take over districts or to, you know, do something that it's just not about. I've met great people. It's a great network. And the support system I got in my first year, as a first-year superintendent, the Broad Academy, as part of those resources, came in and did a curriculum audit. They came in and did a transportation audit. They did a financial audit. And just to give you an example, to illustrate the point, my first week in Springfield, I get told we have a $7.5 million transportation shortfall. The first week of July, the first week of the new fiscal year, I don't know how that's possible. And so, trying to get to the root cause, contacted the Broad folks. They brought in some expertise, connected me, and the expertise came from Massachusetts. It didn't come, you know, from some national organization. It came from Massachusetts. But they covered the expenses, so that I could really get a feel for the lay of the land, the context locally, and some of the challenges that I would be facing. And finally, in terms of experience, I would just say, my work in Massachusetts, working with who I believe is one of the best chiefs in the country, Mitchell Chester, as his deputy, the last three years has provided unbelievable insight and a chance to learn from one of the best. We spent time at the State House with legislators. We spend time appropriately in the governor's office when it's necessary. He has a great relationship with his board chair. I have just learned so much about the value of relationships and how to personalize that approach. It's made a big difference. So, I think it leads me to being ready to assume the state chief role.
Thank you, Alan. I should have noted, Richard, Dr. Richard Zeilie is the board member who's not sitting right there. I've got his questions, though Richard's going to be watching the program. And also, Karen McPhee, the governor's education advisor, is not here, but she is tuning in to watch the proceedings, will be part of our deliberations. But I've got Richard's question, so here's the next one, Alan. What example or examples can you offer of success in organizing and moving disparate stakeholders, outside interests, and your own staff around a shared vision for education improvement? How would you go about such an effort here?
So, for me, President Austin, at the end of the day, I think you have to be clear about expectations. What is it you want to accomplish? Begin with the end in mind, but you got to make sure you got the right people at the table. You got to make sure that you're listening, and some consensus on what the, what the ultimate objectives will be, how you will measure that, how you will monitor it, define success, what does it look like? And my point is that by engaging people upfront, you spend a lot less time on the back end having to do rework. And so, one example of that would be our work in Springfield around labor management collaborations, labor management, community collaborations. I didn't acquiesce to the union. I didn't acquiesce to labor. They didn't acquiesce to me, but we found a way to try and find common ground on the interests of children. And President Collins of the Local Teachers Association, I disagreed on a lot of things, but what we tried to focus on was where we could find common ground, consensus, and we were successful, and we saw that play out in a number of ways, educator evaluation changes, additional resources to the district from outside groups that were willing to invest and commit to our efforts.
Thank you. Eileen.
One of the most important tasks of the superintendent is developing with the state board policies, a structure, I'm sorry, with, developing with the state board its policies and a strategic plan for improving education, and then advancing it effectively with the governor, the legislature, educational interest groups, and the general public.
Yep.
How would you describe your experience and approach in doing that successfully, and how would you work with differences in vision, direction, and expectations, helped by the legislature, the governor, and the state board?
You know, that, therein lies the challenge. I mean, really, if you cut to the chase, there is, there is the opportunity and the challenge. And for me, I don't want to make light of the question, but for me, it's about relationships. It's about building trust. It's about being candid with one another. It's about being respectful of the executive branch and the legislature, but also respective of the board, and trying to navigate that and facilitate where all those parties and their aspirations for the children of Michigan can be heard, can be vetted, can be, you know, tug-of-war back and forth. And at the end of the day, it may mean some level of compromise on the parts of all the parties, because, quite frankly, I don't think the board can operate in isolation. You may think you can, but, you know, there are convening powers and authority that people have, and it's just not a good way to go about the business. So, trying to find common ground, trying to work through problems, and I think when you have a bunch of capital based on trust, you can go to the bank of goodwill when things hit a rub, and you can work through it, if you're committed to do it. It won't be easy. We certainly have done that in Massachusetts, some of the reforms that we have embarked upon. We, on occasion, and sometimes frequently, will hear about the pace of reform, that we're going too fast, trying to do too much. But our commissioner has determined that we're not going to rest until all children are experiencing the same level of quality in their education as their more affluent peers. And so, we're not tone-deaf. We've made adjustments to timelines. We have taken feedback from the legislative leadership, including the education co-chairs. We've listened to the governor with his input, and again, we factored that into adjustments that the commissioner and the board president and the board itself, appropriately, through regulation, were appropriate. So, I'm just trying to say, yes, it's hard work, but you can't give up. Again, you know, a million and a half kids are depending on this board, the executive branch, and the legislative branch, to find a way to come together. branch, and the legislative branch to find a way to come together. And I want to be the spoke in that hub to help facilitate those conversations, the tough ones, and to help us work through sticking points, but always being respectful of the board and never leaving you out of the loop, but also being politically astute to the other bodies of the state government.
Thank you. Kathy, I think you've got the next.
Different people have different views of education, I know. What do you think are the important and fundamental purposes of public education?
Thank you, Ms. Strauss, for your question. So, what do I think are the fundamental purposes of public education? I think at its core, we're charged with preparing young people to be prepared for options in life, to be good citizens, to be good stewards of the things we take for granted, the freedoms that we enjoy every day. And I think if we can help people understand our history, to be able to think critically, to be good communicators, to problem solvers, to learn how to work through differences in a way that doesn't have to be hostile or negative in nature, we can agree to disagree. But helping children garner those skills so that they can be all that they can be and pursue whatever options they choose to do in life. But to be smart, intelligent, and have a work ethic to go about whatever choices they might make. And to have grit, to be able to, when times get tough, to be able to buckle down and work through it. So, it's a lot we ask of our education system. And if we're smart about it, we figure out that we can't do it by ourselves, and so we have to bring other people to the table and leverage those efforts in a way that makes sense. And so, in work we did in Springfield, we had a long list. We had the faith community, we had businesses, we had higher ed colleges, we had parents, philanthropy foundations. But where we differed, because that's one of the challenges, is that people try to do too much, we narrowed our focus, we had a plan, and if you didn't fit in one of the priorities where we were trying to work on, then we said, "Thank you, but no thank you." And so, not every opportunity merits a yes.
Thank you.
Lupe.
Okay, my question is, please speak to the issues of what policies, practices, and/or actions are important to pursue in order to improve teacher and educator preparation, quality, support, morale, and effectiveness.
That's a lot. That's a lot. Quality, effectiveness, morale, that's a lot. I think it starts with the right expectations, it starts with the right standards, it starts with the willingness to make sure that you go in and monitor and measure how well things are working. It, you know, you're taking stock of where you are. Every day I come to work, I want to be better than I was the day before. I want to hold people around me to that same thinking, that we're constantly reflecting and looking at how we can do things better. It also is back to the relationship piece, where you, you know, my wife's an elementary teacher, nationally board certified, and I can tell you, it's not the external stuff that makes her feel good about the work that she does, but it's being appreciated, it's being included and involved. And again, I think the best way to make decisions is to be inclusive, to bring people to the table. We work diligently in Massachusetts with the Urban Supes. We've got a secondary, or not secondary, but we've got another group, a statewide cabinet of superintendent, superintendent advisory council that our commissioner and I, myself, and others on the senior team meet with regularly. We meet with the labor leaders of two, both AFT and NEA, which we, you know, again, we don't agree on everything, but there's just this outreach. We have teacher cabinet, where we have brought teachers in from across the state to help us make informed decisions, and to make sure that that voice is captured as part of the process. And I think what I've seen Mitchell do, and I've always tried to do, learning from some great mentors, that which I have control over, I reserve the right to make final decisions about, and I, you know, I'm upfront about that. But I want people to be part of the process, part of the decisions. And finally, I think, I would just say, is, can't be afraid to admit we made a mistake, right? So, if we get something wrong on the policy front, it's okay to make adjustments, to go back, revisions where we need to, but that ought to be rooted in what the evidence says, not emotional appeals, not just the noise from one segment of the community, but it ought to be rooted in evidence.
Thank you. Anne.
What is the role of accountability systems in public education, and what else has to go along with accountability systems to improve learning?
Yeah, thank you for your question, Ms. Smith. So, you know, accountability means different things to different people. And but for me, it is easy, as an example, to label schools as failures, to put a label on them. But that's not, that's not what we have tried to do in Massachusetts, it doesn't work. So, accountability is the check and balance to make sure that we're protecting, preserving the public investment of limited resources. It's about making sure that each one of us are responsible for the commitments that we made on behalf of children. But you cannot have accountability without assistance, and not just once a year telling people, you know, how they came out on a high-stakes exam, but you've got to make sure that you have people on the ground, in districts, deployed in the right way, offering assistance, being responsive to the needs to help districts and schools work through some of the tough work that's underway. And I, you know, my own experience in Springfield and now around the state in Massachusetts, people want to do the right thing, they want to do well. And some of them are simply stuck, and they don't know what to do. And so, as a state agency, we have an obligation, I don't profess it, we have all the answers. We have tried to take advantage of expertise outside of our agency in Massachusetts. We lean heavily on some of the great institutions of higher learning in the area. We have contracted smartly with outside entities to help build our capacity to provide the services that districts and schools need. And I would do the same if selected to lead the Michigan Department.
Eileen.
Michigan, like other states, except for Massachusetts, has seen policy debates about the nature and utility of state learning standards and assessments, including the Common Core standards in English and Math. And like Michigan, many other states are looking at updating their science standards, and we have social studies coming up. What is the role of standards and assessments in improving student learning, and where do you recommend we should go in our policies regarding standards and assessments?
So, Massachusetts has been a leader in the standards movement for, you know, 20-plus years, and I think there's some things that have gotten right. And I spoke to some of that earlier, that regardless of political affiliation, there's been a strong, consistent commitment to those high expectations. Standards help us determine what should students know and be able to do. And standards can help educators, again, the adults in the building, what should they know and be able to do? Standards help us with charter schools. What do we want them to know and be able to do, and how are we holding them accountable? So, they're absolutely vital, in my estimation, to high performance and making sure that you can hold people accountable. But the other part of your question that I want to speak to a little bit, that's a little different in Massachusetts than what you've described for Michigan, is we have adopted for sure what we refer to as Massachusetts Frameworks for Standards in English Language Arts Reading and Mathematics. We have been piloting the science standards from the Next Generation Science Standards. We've taken a go-slow strategy on social studies, and largely because of feedback from the field that just has said, "Not too much, all at one time." And so, I think for us, we think we can get there without the push in social studies at this point in time. But my point would be, as your superintendent, state superintendent, what I would want to do is make sure that you had the right information in front of you in terms of perceptions from the field, that we had evidence of what had worked, what had not worked, and that we were willing to make adjustments. And then I would want to advise you with a recommendation as a state board in terms of how we should proceed. At the end of the day, my job is to implement what the board decides to do, right? And so, if it was the decision of the board that you wanted to go fast with social studies, then my job is to make sure you know that what it will take to do that well, additional resources, additional time, and the like, and then to make sure that we galvanize our efforts to ensure the implementation was a success.
So, that's an excellent answer, but there's still one more question. Where do you recommend we should go in our policies regarding standards and assessments? In other words, continue on with high standards, continue with the kind of assessment we have?
Yeah, thank you for the follow-up. So, again, I don't know how you can do ed reform without standards, so definitely continue. But I think the piece that I'm advocating for is the need to monitor implementation and make sure you're getting done and what we expected. And two, to be reflective, to go back and do the stocktake, if you will, how is the implementation going, what did we learn from it, are there changes that we need to make to policy? But at the end of the day, I think policies help districts and schools help codify what's important and help people carry out what you want them to do. So, we need to be careful, but we need to be clear.
Thank you. Sandra.
There have been a number of so-called education reform ideas advanced in recent years. Which of these do you think are worthy of exploration, and which would you recommend against?
Worthy of exploration and recommend against? I think, just thinking out loud here, for sure, when I was in Oklahoma City, I always felt like if there was an initiative that came about for education, we had tried it. I mean, we just, whatever it was, try it, see if it works. And when I got to Springfield, it was the same way, it's just a saturation with programs and initiatives and interventions, it's not coherent. So, I don't, which would I keep? We're doing some really good work with virtual learning as one example, in our outreach in Massachusetts to touch families in a different way. Virtual learning is not for every child, but it is, again, for some children, provides them a unique opportunity to learn. And so, we have two virtual academies. So, I think that has promise. I think technology integration in the classroom, making sure that it's embedded in a way that helps teachers teach more effectively, helps them more, you know, be more efficient about the work, helps engage students in a different way so that they can be excited by the learning. So, those are a couple of examples. In terms of one that I would jettison, you know, context matters. And so, what might not work in one community, contextually, situation, circumstances, may make it work. I think about, I've seen some work on gender-specific schools, and I think, and the results, in some cases, may be mixed. What would I jettison? I've seen some graduation initiatives implemented poorly, so it wasn't so much the intervention, it was the level of fidelity to implementation, which is the crux of my argument, that it's doing something well with fidelity, integrity, making sure that it's implemented in the right way and the right supports are in place, largely will yield you some good results. But there are some things we should stop doing. I think when you think about teacher performance in collective bargaining, you know, one of the things I think has worked well, what we've learned in Lawrence, in one of the districts that we've taken over, is we have gotten rid of stepping lanes, and now there are career pathways for teachers to be able to essentially pay for performance, but it's a way, I hate to use those words because it's somewhat antagonizing, but there's a way for teachers to take on more responsibility with the right supports, to have more voice in the building, and a career pathway for them to earn more money without just making pay raises stipulated on longevity and time in service.
Thank you. You spoke to this somewhat, you can elaborate, it's about the role of technology and the place of virtual blended and cyber learning education, and how those tools and opportunities can be used to improve learning and educational outcomes. Any more you'd like to elaborate on?
No, I think, you know, just to say, President Austin, that I think technology offers, in the right way, if we can do it in the right way, if it's, again, integrated into the classroom in a blended way, allowing teachers to still, you know, rely on their expertise, but it's a tool. And when we prepare teachers to use those tools in advance of the implementation, generally it goes well. But where we just simply put gadgets and things in buildings, you know, kind of a wish list, the likelihood of being able to implement with any kind of results are really marginalized.
Thank you. Michelle, you've got the next.
I've got several parts of your meeting.
Okay.
Okay. What experience do you have with special education? What do you think the direction and agenda for special education in Michigan needs to be to improve educational and employment outcomes? And how would you work to ensure special education students, parents, and stakeholders are included in the process of improving special education? So, what has been your experience? The direction and agenda for better outcomes, and how to include parents, students, stakeholders?
And so, let me just start with, real quick, so federal programs in Oklahoma City, obviously a large special ed population, part of that work there. In Springfield, when I arrived there in 2008, 24% of the student population in Springfield Public Schools were identified for special needs services, or students with special needs.
24%?
24%. National average is about 13%. And so, statewide in Massachusetts is about 13%. I think here in Michigan, you're at about 12 or 13%, so consistent with the national averages, I believe. But what that told me was, and what I found, I had some suspicions, but what I found is that we were largely labeling children for special need services because of faulty instructional programs and strategies to address learning needs. And so, sometimes kids with language acquisition struggles were being identified for special need services when it wasn't special needs, that they needed help with language acquisition. Sometimes children with social-emotional challenges were inappropriate. In the four years in Springfield, I was able to get that rate down from 24% to 19%, not by denying children who needed special need services access to services, but by making sure that we had remediation strategies and interventions to the core curriculum that allowed teachers and building administrators to work with children in a much different way. And so, and again, I think in largely underperforming communities, all too often, I don't want to overgeneralize, but all too often we see children that have been mislabeled. And it is not my intent to deny any child access to services, I want to be clear about that. But I want to make sure that we're not misidentifying them based on some instructional problems or lack of quality. So, to the agenda, I think all children can learn, and how do we prepare them for the workforce? You know, one of the places I visited, I will never forget, was the Massachusetts Day School, which is a school that allows the most cognitively disabled students, those with the most serious disabilities, to receive some intensified instruction, teaching and learning in a special way. I can remember visiting that school last year and being in a classroom where a kid was using assistive technologies to do a math problem, and was working through it quite well, but was at his own pace. And I remember the teacher trying to encourage him along, and I remember his response, and it makes me choke up even now, but I remember him saying, "I'm not stupid," right? And the point I want to make is that, you know, all children can do well. And, and the point I want to make is that, you know, all children can do well. Some of us need different kinds of support, some may need extra help, but our job, I think, is to make sure that we have high expectations for all of them, that we provide them the support and assistance that they need, and that we encourage them to realize their full potential, right? So, not lowering our expectations. So, that's to your question about employment and career and opportunity. High expectations for all, and that we try to make sure they're getting access to the right supports. To the parent engagement piece, again, I think we need to try to meet parents where they are, we need to listen, we need to make sure that we have structures in place to hear concerns from parents, and that there are, again, redress opportunities where they think they've not been heard, or that there's a disconnect in what their expectations are.
Thank you. Kathy?
What do you see as the role of school choice and charter schools in, in improving education, learning, and educational outcomes?
Fair question. School choice and charters. And so, I mentioned earlier the grand bargain in Massachusetts. We had a small handful in Oklahoma City. The legislation in Oklahoma City was more around, they were restricted to just the urban centers, so I thought that was flawed. So, that, you know, the legislature thought charters were good, but they didn't think they were good for all communities. So, I was challenged by that on a personal level. But I don't believe charters are a silver bullet solution, but I do believe they can be part of a choice portfolio. And I do believe, because we're seeing some phenomenal work in Massachusetts, and again, where we have very high expectations and high standards for the approval process, and Massachusetts, the state board is the authorizer, and the expectations for getting authorized, the process is pretty rigorous. And, and, you know, it's not a license-to-be charter forever. There are review, renewal processes that are in place. I think, I was looking at some data the other day, I think, I know we closed two in Springfield that, where I was superintendent, and I think across the state, they closed 23. Currently have 81 charters in place. And in the last six years, to the commissioner's credit, as a state chief, we have approved 31 charters and created about 21,000 seats for students in those charter schools. So, I believe they have a place, but they're not a silver bullet or panacea for what ails public education. On the next frontier, where I think we're hopeful and optimistic about perhaps being able to lead some of our proven charter providers into the turnaround space, and that's where we have districts or schools that are the most stuck, we're trying to work to get more of our charter operators to be willing to go into that area.
Thank you. Pam?
What experience have you had in successfully turning around underperforming schools? What do you see as effective approaches to school turnaround?
Yeah, so, experience, definitely specific, Springfield stands out. In 2010, the state created special legislation that gave the commissioner unprecedented powers over persistently low-performing schools, and he identified 34 schools at that time in 2010. And of those 34, we were blessing and a curse, we had the opportunity to work with 10 of them in Springfield. And of those 10, we were able to get six across the bar, and so about a 60% approval rating. At the end of a three-year period, three or four-year period, six were removed from turnaround status. The middle schools were a little more tough, and while I wasn't able to finish that work on my watch there, there are now some initiatives that we're taking, working with Springfield from the state agency perspective, to work with the school board and bringing in some outside providers, looking for charter solution. We've seen in, I mentioned Lawrence earlier, where the state has taken over a district as part of the 2010 legislation. We're seeing phenomenal results there in, in terms of our work. And part of the solution in, receiver Riley's strategy is using charters in this targeted way. Again, he didn't make the district all charters, but what he tried to do, where we had some proven providers, evidence of impact, to assist them where he had really the most unstuck schools. But at the end of the day, for me, what are the right expectations, again, for all children? Not just those in charters, but making sure that we have a high bar for our kids.
Great, thank you. Lupe?
As state superintendent of public instruction, you would manage and be accountable for the performance of the Michigan Department of Education. What are directions for change and improvement in the work of the department, and/or what process would you use to learn how to understand, identify, and make such improvements?
Thank you for your question. And so, when, a couple of things come to mind about change and leading the department, and this has worked for me in many places, not just at the State Education Agency, not just in Springfield, but one is to be very intentional about entry. In other words, to have a formalized plan for what do I intend to get done in those first 90 days. And part of it would be, I, I don't want to assume that I know all of the issues for the agency, and I've only been here for one interview, right? So, part of it is, I got to take stock. I got to make sure that, and for me, it is very labor-intensive, but I do a lot of one-on-one meetings, I do small group meetings, there is a concerted effort to look at data, to look at a lot of different reports that I don't have access to now as a candidate, but I would have access to if selected. So, it is making sure that I get right on, that I get the current conditions right. It's followed by not just the interactions with staff, and, 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 and the intentionality of the entry plan and the meetings with staff, it goes beyond just internal to the organization. So, want to triangulate perception, so can't just depend on what the staff says the current conditions are, so I have to hear the voices of districts and schools, and what's their perception of the agency? Have to listen to the board. What's your perception of the agency and its effectiveness? Have to listen to the legislature. What's their perception from their constituents? The executive branch, what's their perception? So, try and triangulate that before we start talking about what I'll do. But, but just a few other things that would go in concert with that would just be the notion of high expectations for, for everyone. So, and the way that I try to do that is be clear about what I expect of myself and the people around me, be clear about where we're going and how we're going to get there, and what our priorities are that are jointly established and developed by, with the board, making sure that we use data to get a real grip on our current realities, and so again, I try to share some of that with you in the beginning of the presentation, that if, if people, you know, feel that the nation's report card results are okay for Michigan's children, that, that would be concerning to me. So, I'd want to create a sense of urgency around the work, but I try to use data and data points, dropout graduation proficiency, perception data from the field, but there's a way to, to do that, to triangulate how we would go about change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandra?
What do you see as the role of the superintendent and the department with local school districts and intermediate school districts?
So, the, the, the local districts and intermediate districts, intermediate service agencies, as I think of them. As a state chief, what's important is to, again, for people to see themselves in the reform agenda. And, and that means those at the top of the pyramid, who are the highest performing districts, as well as those at the lowest end of the pyramid, who may be in the most stuck schools, and even those in the middle. So, I think as the state chief, state superintendent, you, you got to make sure that you have lines of communications, that people have access to you and you to them. You got to make sure that you're in districts and schools appropriately, not just for the sake of being in a building. You got to make sure that you're advocating and, for the interest of children and districts and some of the challenges that they're facing. And you got to make sure that you involve them in the decisions of reform. You can't take to superintendents, either at the intermediate agency level, or the school or district level, you can't take to them decisions that have already been cooked, finalized, and, and just tell them to go forth and do it. But the intermediate agencies can be a good resource. I don't know a lot about them in Michigan's context, but I believe they can be a resource. Right now, one of the biggest questions I have is how do they intersect with the agency itself? So, that, that's something that, that I'd like to explore and look at a little further.
Thanks, Ellen. Michelle?
Number 16 out of 21, by the way. What has been your success as an educational leader in collaborating and partnering with the business, labor, and the broader community? Please discuss specific partnerships or achievements due to those partnerships that have developed as a result of your leadership.
So, I'll start with the current and work back with just a couple of examples. One is the Massachusetts Business Leaders for Education, which is a nonprofit group of our business leaders from across the Commonwealth who have an interest in education. And working with that group on our standards movement, on our new assessment system, and by the way, in Massachusetts, we're taking two years to test drive that system before we take a recommendation to the board, and to make sure that we do the appropriate surrounding work, so that, you know, the due diligence to give the board a good recommendation. But we've heard from our business leaders loud and clear on the disconnect between the skill sets that children have when they graduate from school and their employability. And so, they were very instrumental and integral into the revision of standards in Massachusetts. They, they also have been a great sounding board to the commissioner about the work, and again, a way to triangulate how things are going and where we might need to readjust or pay some different attention to. In Springfield, I mentioned our labor management collaboration. We did lots of work together trying to improve the culture of the system, and trying to do that with better relationships. And the president and I committed publicly that we would try to find common ground, and there were instances, I want to just be absolutely clear, where we disagreed, but we never took our disagreements public in four years. And I can tell you, I can, I can remember times specifically where he's been in my office, and he's telling me privately how he really feels about something that I may have decided to do. And, and I can remember one instance, when the 2010 legislation came about, where the state identified the 34 schools, and there were some tough timelines that we had to meet to, to work in those 10 schools. And I kind of dropped the ball in engaging him in that work. And it wasn't because I disrespected him or I didn't trust him, it was because I was just more concerned with getting it done, and making sure that if we didn't blow a critical timeline, it might have some adverse impact on the district. At the end of the day, he was forgiving, and he was forgiving. He came, he shared how he really felt, I explained to him why it occurred, but I was able to go to the bank of goodwill, and we have a relationship that was based on trust. Not that we agreed on everything, but, but we were, we were just able, I think, to move the, move the needle in several areas in that regard. We were also the recipients of a sizable six-figure, six-figure grant from the NEA Foundation that, again, allowed us to expand on our parent outreach efforts, and so that was tangible. In Oklahoma City, negotiated contracts for adjustments to changes so that we could have some master teachers and deploy them a little differently than what we had previously had. So, three quick examples that come to mind.
Thank you. Lupe?
Michigan and Michigan's schools are very diverse in terms of race, ethnicity, culture, and socioeconomic levels.
Yep.
Please speak to your approach and give examples of your success in supporting diverse learners and poor children to success in schools.
Yeah. So, the most diverse educational environment that I've been in was Springfield. And again, the Latino community, about 60% of our students Latino, but they were the fastest growing, and we had a spectrum, largely as a whole, the city was very poor, but there were pockets of, of different income thresholds and the like. And again, a large special education number of students. But what, what I've always tried to do, Lupe, is, you know, to work with people to help them know who I am as a person, to be clear about the vision, what is it we're doing, why are we doing it, to make sure that people knew I had high expectations for all children, and that we wouldn't marginalize their futures by their station or conditions in life. And, you know, just, we, our, our parent outreach in Springfield, I think, is a model in, in many ways, where we, you know, we, we did parent home visits, we, we would go where they are. We tried to meet parents where they were, and we tried to take stock of what they said their needs were. So, and sometimes we're in housing projects, sometimes we're at community centers, but we didn't just wait for them to come to us to tell us what, what they needed or what they wanted for their children. So, just trying to go where they were, be genuine about that, and to not make judgments about their station in life. Likewise, making sure families from the more affluent segment of that community, that their needs, their children, were just as important, and we had just as much a responsibility to making sure that their educational experience was everything that it needed to be. So, but just trying to be responsive in that regard.
Great. Eileen?
As superintendent, you'll manage the Michigan Department of Education's large budget and complex organization, including federal compliance. Please describe your approach and success in managing a similar organization. In what directions for improvement in the work of the department would you pursue, along with what process you would use to understand, identify, and make such improvements?
The last part's repeated, unfortunately.
It's a big question.
Yeah. So, I want to make sure I got the first part of the question right. Yeah, you are, I think, total funds about $19 billion, is that correct?
Well, the flow through the department, that go to schools, yes, but a lot of that is in the foundation grant, which does not flow through the department.
Yeah. But my, my, and, and the point I'm just trying to make is, I think you're about $19 billion. I think, when we look at total revenue, local aid, state aid, federal programs, all those dollars in Massachusetts, about $14 billion. In Springfield, it was about almost $400 million. And I mentioned to you earlier that I cut my teeth in federal programs in Oklahoma City, working a number of NCLB programs. So, what would I do here? One is, I can tell you, the federal government and its money and the compliance issues are nothing to take lightly, and so you want to make sure that we have the right processes in place, that we're timely in our reporting, that we're accurate, and yet, we don't want to be burdensome to schools. And so, some state agencies have found a way to do that programming and, and that reporting in a, in a much more efficient way than others. I don't know the nature of that here in Michigan, but as part of my transition, if selected as your superintendent, that would be part of the things that I'd want to do upon entry and take a look at, because there's a lot at stake. If you get it wrong, the risk is losing all federal dollars, and I know very few states or districts that could afford for that to occur. So, it's always been a responsibility that I take serious, and I want to make sure that we get right.
I think that answers it.
Yeah. We've got just a couple more questions, and then there's plenty of chance for you to elaborate and ask us anything, but Kathy, you've got the next one.
Kathy, could you give us some specific ideas of how you would, like, how we, you would judge your own performance and how we as a board should evaluate your work?
Yeah. And superintendent performance is important for a number of reasons. I don't want to overstate the obvious. But how, how to go about that, I believe, is, one, what I want you to know is that I am, I am my own worst critic. There's no higher bar. You can't set a higher bar for me than I set for myself. But where it gets tricky sometime is making sure that we have consensus on what the targets are for a given year. And so, I always want to make sure that we do that upfront, that, that we're very clear about what those targets are, whether they relate to performance of students, whether it relates to performance of the organization, whether it's advocacy work, you know, whether it's working with the legislature in a different way, or the executive branch, but whatever those expectations are. those expectations are, I want to make sure that we have consensus on them along the way. And what I believe is that when you're clear upfront, and then you provide periodic feedback throughout the year, that is the best opportunity for people to do what they want and need to do and to be successful. And so, in my own world, the people that work with me, I'm very clear upfront about, and that's sometimes a give and take. You know, it's not one-way communication, but it's a give and take. But we come to consensus on what those goals are, and then throughout the year, we're having conversations about how well you hit those marks, and then we're making adjustments where we need to, if necessary, so that at the end of the year, when it comes time for an overall assessment of your performance, you're not surprised, and I'm not surprised. And I think that would be the same conditions that I would expect and hope that the board and I would be able to work through if I were your superintendent.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ellen. The last and most probably straightforward question, or simplest one. Why do you want to be superintendent of public instruction here in Michigan?
Yeah, thank you so much, President Austin, for your question. So let me just begin by saying that this is not some knee-jerk reaction to anything. This is, my decision to apply to Michigan was well thought out, but it's based on my unique experience and the skills that I believe I have. I am, I think, mentally tough, I'm politically astute, I've got a wide range of experiences at both the district level, the central office level, and now the state. I spent the last three years working with a great chief at one of the highest performing state agencies in the country, and we have the results to prove it. We try to listen well, we don't profess to know everything, and I think Michigan is at this juncture, this crossroad, with an opportunity for change, and an opportunity to perhaps lead your state and this agency in a different direction on behalf of its children, 1.5 million kids. And that excites me. I'm also a son of Michigan. I was born and raised here for part of my young life, and so I also know that I've been mentored, and just blessed with so many great mentors in my life, even to this day. And it's an opportunity to give back, and not just to the urban centers of Michigan, but to the whole state as a whole. And my faith tells me that that ought to be part of the work that I do every day. So it's a chance to make a greater contribution as a son of Michigan, in the realm of the work that I love every day, and that's education, public education in particular, excites me. And so, I'm thrilled by the opportunity, and hopefully things will work out.
Thank you, Ellen. So those are all our formal questions. If there's anything you would like to share or add to or reinforce about your offerings to us, and anything you'd like to ask us, by all means.
Thank you. I would just like, the first question I have is, can you tell me what, in your mind, what are you looking for the superintendent to interact? How, what does that look like on the ground with the legislature and the executive branch? From your perspectives, what does that interaction look like, and how should it look to best meet your needs and the needs of Michigan's children?
I think as we've said prior, one thing we're looking for is to have the kind of trust and total communication with our superintendent, where we are on a common page of what we're trying to get done. And then we're looking for assistance with the other stakeholders, whether it's the field, the governor, legislature, to help us engage with them in an affirmative, constructive, and effective way, to help us together find that kind of common agenda for improving learning, and to get to that work that you started with, which is, we have to move the needle on student achievement, and we need to be effectively engaged with all those parties to help direct our efforts, or redirect our efforts, in my view, in Michigan, towards more effective policies, practices, financing, and programs. And my colleagues, I welcome similar or different perspectives.
I would add that we do have an education advisor who works for the governor.
That was going to be my second question, so.
Karen McPhee.
I read that.
And this position is, works for the state board of education, but it acts as a cabinet advisor for the governor.
Got you.
So, you're in a position to translate for us very effectively, and the, while there are political people here in the department, the legislature welcomes contact with the state superintendent, with the knowledge and the perspective and the hopes and ambitions.
Yep, fair enough.
And I would add, we, the governor is a member ex officio, non-voting of the board. We encourage the governor's perspective to be felt always here and weighing in on our decision-making, and vice versa. You know, we look for, I think you put it well in the sense of being, if you were most effective, to be the hub that helps us relate as different centers of influence and decision-making, towards a wheel that actually turns in the right direction.
Yep. Fair enough.
That's a good question.
Sorry?
It was a good question.
Oh, thank you, thank you. I have done some homework about Michigan, rest assured. So, you've been very clear in some of the documents I've read about your priorities. You've talked about closing the gap, you've talked about early childhood, high-quality early childhood investments, you've talked about personalized teaching and technology integration, you've talked about preparation in health and stability financially and health-wise for schools. Would I just, you know, beyond the priority priorities, what are your hopes and dreams for Michigan's children? For the 1.5 million kids all over the state, what are some of your hopes and dreams for the kids of this great state?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. I think what we all want is for all our children to be exposed to a quality education, and to achieve, to be successful citizens in the state of Michigan or any place in the country, and not only be able to work productively, but to be participatory, informed citizens. Not just, in my view, it's not just job trading, it's more than job trading, it's education.
Absolutely. Others, Michelle?
Well, I was going to say, I see the, I've been very involved with the Detroit stuff, and I live in Detroit, so I do have sort of an extra concern, at least, you know, right now, about some of the urban schools and the reforms that are there. And what I see in my community is, immediately going, and like a block next to me, there's a lot of kids, and they go to school all over the place. And they're always hopping around. It's not like they're, you know, this, and our community school is right around the corner, and I would love, and what it used to be, I would, and, but better, where we have a community where my children know the next-door neighbor's children, and they have a common community experience, and that the schools are, as it is in many communities, in my community, the school is also forces a sense of, you know, it builds the community around the children, and it supports the children in a way that I think is, right now in the city, is tattered, is falling apart, and I think that hurts the kids. So that's, that's my hope and dream, that we have more cohesive community working around with, working with the schools.
And which, the final question I would ask.
Can I just add to your question? I think Michigan has among the most socio-economically and racially diverse and segregated communities.
Yep.
And our, and my goal certainly is, we need to make, given that, the zip code you grew up in or the community determines a lot of economic opportunity, life chances, given the quality of education available. We have to deliver the same quality learning opportunities and ability to find their way into the future for all of our young people, no matter what zip code or community they're in.
Couldn't agree more.
And if I could add, one of the really difficult parts of solving this is that we're 22nd highest in total outlay for education, K-12, eighth highest adjusted for per capita income, according to the Census Bureau, first in the country in teacher salaries overall, adjusted for cost of living. But we're 37th to 41st in NAEP, in English language arts and math, and I have no trouble with being first in the country in total support for education, but I have a lot of trouble with the disparity right now between what we're putting into it and how our children are achieving. And if we're going to find a future for the state that works, as you know, in Massachusetts, 20 years ago, our NAEP scores were the same, virtually the same, as Massachusetts.
Right.
And I know that you're saying that that's why you see Michigan as a huge opportunity, because we're recognizing that.
Yep.
The question is, how do we find a way to put those dollars, and possibly new dollars as the economy improves, into something that rewards every child for being born in this state, and leads them to a productive life and being a great citizen and a great worker?
Yep. Clear.
Can I add something else? All of these things that are being said at the table, there's one person that is extremely very important in the delivery of, and that's the teacher, the classroom teacher. And so, one of my questions was about teacher and teacher evaluation, prepared, preparing teachers and all of that. So, in my mind, one of the things that is lacking with this very important person is that respect, that inclusion, that importance, elevating the position, as other people have said. I taught for 36 years, I was a principal and all that kind of thing, so I have lived what the teachers are feeling now, and I think that's very, very important, because all of these things that are said around the table, if that person is not feeling good about who she is or who he is, nothing is going to get done. So, there's one area where we must concentrate to get the teachers to feel good about who they are, so then in turn, they teach our children.
I could not agree with you more. Any reform work, any aspirations you have for children in Michigan is, you know, that is the number one lever. It is classroom instruction, how do you help teachers have the wherewithal that they need? How do you help them have a voice at the table about the reforms and the work that's underway? And how do you, you know, honor their craft and their practice, and at the same time, help them see the need of urgency with our current conditions? And so, there's a way to do that without assigning blame, without finding fault, right? But bringing people to the table in a collaborative way to say, look, here's where we are, here's where we want to be, now we need to start thinking, talking, acting differently, and working toward achieving that. And I don't want to misrepresent that it's easy work. It is not. It is very difficult work, but it can be done. And there are states that are doing it, and there are districts that are doing it, and I want to be part of that work here in Michigan.
Anything else you'd like to quiz us on?
Timeline, timeline, that's my final question.
Timeline.
Next steps.
Tomorrow, we're going to get better acquainted with three other fine candidates. Our hope is tomorrow, we'll be able to prune that group, which is going to be difficult, to a few or a handful of finalists, do some more homework, have another set of interviews, ideally, I mean, we scheduled them for next week, the 18th, and make a decision at that point. Always, if we're wrestling with a decision and need to take appropriate time to get it right, we will do so, but I'm very happy, and I thank all my colleagues and everybody for helping us hit our marks in terms of trying to make a good decision, but also in a way that respects everybody's time and willingness to step forward. So I just want to say, on behalf of all of us, thank you for offering yourself as a candidate. You know, the folks you've worked with in Massachusetts and elsewhere say tremendously good things about your integrity and abilities. You should be proud of that. You should, clearly today, in your commitment to education, to children, to how we come together, to work together around all this, is, it shines, and it speaks very clearly to us. So, again, thank you, you'd be, you'd offer Michigan a lot, and we really thank you for stepping forward and offering your service to us. And we will, we need to invite any public participation, but if there isn't, we'll adjourn in a moment, but if you want to stand by, and I'm sure you want to say hi to the other board members we didn't get to introduce you to, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you if you'll step aside for a minute. I will, as we always do, we always invite the public to come in at our meetings, and anyone who wants to say anything more can have a couple minutes. Is there anyone who wants to speak? If not, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Support.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you very much.